Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rote?
Graham Cassoon's absent. Tobin is absent. Kleiner?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
John Francois?
Here.
Burr?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Massey?
Here.
President Rodriguez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Correspondence.
We just have one correspondence this evening. It's from Ag and Marketing about a municipal shelter inspection report from Port George.
Received and filed.
That is all for correspondence.
For the good of the city, anyone would like to address the council, please step forward. You have three minutes to address the council. No personal attacks.
Good evening, Joel Sierra, County Legislature District 20, City of Middletown. It's great to be back. Thank you for having me. This pandemic is almost over. It's been a long pandemic. Kudos to the city and how you guys handled the pandemic. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor, for the way you led our city. You guys did an excellent job. Just wanted to say a few things. I know we had some delays on the Heritage Trail a couple of months ago came into the city. I'm excited about that. As you all know, Legoland is open. We're trying to push a big push for tourism. Along with tourism comes sales tax, so we're hoping to keep the sales tax numbers and, you know, share the sales tax with the city and the rest of the municipalities. The Freedom Fest is this Friday. Due to the rain, it was rescheduled this Friday at 4:30. The gates open if you can make it. They're honoring all the first responders. They put on a good show. It's been a long time since the fireworks have been put out. I know you guys had the fireworks not too long ago. It was a great display, and we're looking forward to having you all out there. I got to commend you guys on your stance on the marijuana. I know the county doesn't really take an action on this, but I do think that you're doing the right thing by opting out and giving yourselves a little bit more time until the state figures out how to regulate it, you know? On the public consumption portion, I align myself with the same views as the mayor. I think it's an issue that, you know, has to be addressed, and I'm glad that you guys are on the forefront of that. That's all I have, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Any questions for county legislator?
Again, it's great to see you all. Thank you for having me, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the council?
Good evening. Hope everyone is well. My name is Leilani Lockett. I am actually fairly new to the Middletown community. We just bought a home a year ago, so we're celebrating our anniversary for buying a house. I am here tonight to represent power against tobacco. I am also a member of the Middletown Cares Community Coalition, and I am here to share resources to expand the current law, tobacco no smoking law, to include vaping. We are a free resource through the New York State Department of Health Bureau of Tobacco Control Program, and we are here as a free resource to the community. We have lots of different municipalities reaching out to us in light of the marijuana legalization to include vaping in their current policies. I brought an example of some signage that we have available. They're updated to include vaping.
Flip it. The one on your right hand.
Oh, is it upside down?
Not to you.
That helps, right? So I just am here as a resource. Please reach out to us if you are interested in expanding the current law to include vaping, and please reach out to us. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Want to add to committee, John? To the committee?
Sure. Which one?
Legislation.
Legislation later.
We'll give Mr. Johnson. Anyone else would like to address the council? Eileen, do we have anybody online?
Not at this time.
Okay. Do you want to let Alex give your remarks?
Well, I thought he was coming up to the mic rather than going back and giving some personal comments, but the, it's ironic that Leilani showed up on the night that we're voting on the...
It is ironic.
...opting out on the marijuana. And, but what Alex has explained in the back right now is that there's a part two to our opt-out, and that part two is much more restriction on smoking in and around public property, and that would include vaping and smoking of cigarettes also. So I think we're on the same page, and we would appreciate any support you can give us also on the public consumption part of marijuana, because we think it's, at least some of us do, and hopefully we'll find out tonight if all of us do, whether the dangers of the marijuana laws presented and the side issues of, especially the public consumption part, are a concern. I don't have a lot to report tonight other than I think we've covered the marijuana issue pretty well. Since the first night when we had the public hearing and we had a majority of people from out of town, you notice with out-of-towners, they don't come back usually, especially when you challenge their position, and I thought we all challenged their positions quite well. The people from Duchess County are still in Duchess County. The guy that, in Long Island, is still in Long Island, and we're here listening to our constituents. So I hope you consider supporting the opt-out of the legislation tonight. I think it's important. It's an important message, and it's an important message that we're going to be sending our state representatives as we seek a change in the state law regarding public consumption. And as we know, it doesn't affect medical marijuana. It doesn't affect the expungement of records. I think all of us, or a majority of us, probably all of us, agree about expunging the records. It's just a focus on, what it boils down to is that if we opt out, we can always opt back in, but if we stay in, we're in forever, and I think that's a winning argument with most reasonable people. The other part I'm here tonight is to introduce to you our new treasurer. As you know, Don Paris has been with us for 11 years, and Don has done a great job since he came here working for the city. You know, he's had other careers, much more high-profile careers, but hopefully this one was near and dear to his heart. He put his heart and soul into the job, and he's done a wonderful job for not only us as elected officials, but also the city of Middletown. So tonight you'll be voting on his replacement, Kelly Ann Kelly. She is currently the treasurer in the Village of Walden, and as we went through the process, she had an interview with Don first, and Don absolutely made a strong recommendation to myself, and then myself and Don spoke with her together, and we have sent a resume to you and asked you to feel free if you had any questions to contact her directly, and hopefully it'll be unanimous vote tonight. She comes with great credentials and great recommendations, so hopefully you'll have an opportunity to become more familiar with her and her work, but at the same time, Don has also offered, as you know, both positions in the treasurer's office. The number one and number two position are both leaving right around the same time. Janet Gallo, after 30-plus years, retired on June 30th, and Don's leaving. So Don has agreed to stay on on a per diem, part-time basis as needed, to manage some of the projects as the transition continues. So you'll probably still see him around a little bit. I'm sure the less, the better for his perspective, but I'm sure everything will move along just fine during the transition. So Kelly, if you want to come up and say a few words, please, come on up.
Hi, everybody. I'm a treasurer, and I'm not a great public speaker, so bear with me. I'm much better at crunching numbers than talking in public. I hope you will give me the opportunity to come work at the city. I feel my experience at the Village of Walden on a much smaller scale will help me here, and I'm also very grateful that Don has agreed to stay on, show me the ropes, and get us through any things that we need to get through.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Any questions?
Any question for Kelly? Okay.
And that's all I have for tonight. I don't think I'm really, I'm going to make it short and sweet tonight.
Thank you.
I was hoping to be a counterpuncher tonight, but nobody showed up for the, so I'm a little disappointed, but...
Any questions for the mayor?
I'm not counterpunching tonight. Go ahead. Unless you want to try, Massey. Go ahead.
Take a shot.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Remarks of the department heads.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to report on what we're working on with the ONW station. As you see tonight, you have a few resolutions regarding the ONW. Caitlin has been working on the CFA application that is due next week. We're applying for $750,000 in historic preservation monies, so we need your support tonight on the resolution. Also, Caitlin and I are making a presentation to the county for home funds tomorrow as part of an application we submitted for $800,000 for the affordable housing component of the project. So we're looking forward to that presentation tomorrow. And also, you see that, I believe, there's a resolution for the seeker tonight. So as you can see, we're moving ahead with the ONW project and looking forward to getting that going. Also, we did have a rainout last week. We attempted our first concert series, but we're looking forward to this Friday. I think Mother Nature is going to be on our side, we hope. So 7 o'clock Friday, Festival Square. And Farm Market is moving ahead full steam. I know there's been an uptick in customers at the new location, so everything is moving pretty well there. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Brian. Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. We'll start off reminding the public and contractors that the traffic operation project is out for public bid, and the bids opening are in August, and this is to replace old signalized intersections, upgrade them to be ADA compliance with pedestrian crossing and so on, and putting up curbs and sidewalks in the bid area and outside the bid area to connect the ADA project that is almost completed for curbs and sidewalks. It's not finished yet, but it's almost completed with the risk of the traffic operation and landscape. So that's about, it's about 20, say, $25 million project, so we're looking forward to that. It's going to make a major, major improvement for our city. For Alderman Massey, the reservoirs are at 90% capacity, 98% capacity, so we're in very good shape. Before you tonight, there is several resolutions, awarding bids for plumbing, for electrical, for HVAC, for CND material, for tires disposal, for chemicals. Hopefully Alderman Massey will help me with the chemical bid award as well, so we have a lot of bids to be awarded tonight, and requesting your support. I just want to address, since the mayor did not address sanitation, I want to update you where we are. I've been sending you emails and pictures about what's going on. We received two of the mechanical arms for our garbage trucks. On Saturday, we had four-hour training for our drivers. Two of our drivers have been using one truck, taking turns and watching each other, and so they used it Monday, yesterday, and today, and they use it even in crowded areas. They use it for North Street. They use it for Lake Avenue. They use it for Prospect Avenue, and they use it for, in Presidential Heights as well, where houses are far apart. They are extremely impressed with them. They are very happy with them, and that's a great accomplishment. This is something that the mayor and I, and council president, and many of you, we've been, we had this as a target since 2005, since I started here. I wanted to switch over from basically doing that manual backbreaking labor of two workers chasing the garbage truck all day, basically at 100-degree temperature, 90-degree temperature, or freezing, or ice storm, to try to pick up garbage cans and dump them into the back of a truck. So finally, we're getting to a point in Middletown, I mean, honestly, that is a major milestone for us and very historic. I don't mean to belabor the point, but it's a great achievement for us. It's going to save, like the mayor said, it's going to serve in our workman's comp rates. It's going to make our city cleaner, because we have those containers in there that are sealed, and many people, a lot of people are complying, so just keep it up, please. Comply with our code. Use only, whatever, you put the garbage only in the containers that were provided to you. Do not put garbage in recyclables. Separate the two of them, and we are marching into a great, great future, really, with our sanitation, with this major change that we have done. And with that, I will conclude my remarks, except if you have any questions for me.
Jacob, just going back, you said you have two new trucks now?
Yes, we're waiting for the third one.
So we started doing the fourth ward and...
We're going, yes, sir.
So what about the employees? Or they, they're not in the back of the truck anymore, right?
No, no. We're still, we're, it's training right now. It's going to take us a while to train. Right now, we're going to have a driver in the mechanical arm, and another driver is going to be walking with him to adjust, as we get into the heart of the city, to adjust the location of the cans, and if the cans are placed right, many people, as an example, I'm glad you said that, many people are locating the garbage cans right next to the mailbox. Please do not do that. Leave at least one foot between the, because otherwise you'll grab the mailboxes at the same time, so it's been a problem. So what we're going to do is, we're going to put an ax in there on the grass, or on the pavement, or wherever it is, and if the place is wrong, if whatever you're putting it is wrong, we're going to have one of the drivers, so we're going to have two drivers. One is operating the machine, the truck, the other one is walking with him, so he can learn from the outside. He will see. It's a learning, it's a learning curve. So so far, we're going to keep, obviously, it's going to take us a while to get used to it, so nobody's going shifted over or anything like that. We are still keeping everyone, and once we're done with the training, I think we'll be in very good shape. But the good thing is, the guys who are using it, they're extremely happy with it. They said, oh, my God, where was this all this time? It's Lenny and Pridmore, both of them. They operate, they're extremely happy with them. They said, how did we do that for all these years? So that's where we are. So next, tonight, tomorrow, we're going to go to the third ward, and after that, we'll go to the first ward. And we're going to be using one truck tomorrow. I think, I think we've got the insurance for the second truck today. We're trying to get it done today. If we have it done today, tomorrow, we'll have to do two trucks, and third truck has not been delivered yet.
Any question for Jacob? Thank you, Alderman Johnson.
I just had one thing to clarify. I think people will now begin to realize they want to get rid of their old garbage cans, and my neighbor asked me about that.
Yes.
The mayor said, he asked you, so if people want to get rid of their old garbage can, they should put it out?
Yes, you put it out during your regular garbage collection day, and just put a piece of paper on it, white paper, tape it on it to say, please dispose of this can.
So now even with robotic arm, they'll still pick up the old garbage cans?
Yeah. We'll get it.
I just want to be sure.
Yes, absolutely, we'll get it. That's what we committed to people.
Not with garbage, though.
Right. What yard waste? What yard waste?
No, no, I said...
Can they use it for yard waste? I heard the mayor say it once. Can they use a garbage can for yard waste?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Are you talking about disposing of the can?
Yes, you can dispose of the can at any time.
Can should be empty.
At any time during your regular, we're not going to make it complicated. You'll dispose of your can.
Empty.
During, empty, put a label on it, at any time where it's your time to put up your garbage. That's all. Now, Alderman Sierra, councilman, you're not Alderman.
Legislator.
A legislator. Legislator Sierra, he just reminded me about the yard waste. Please do not put any yard waste in these large containers that are dedicated for the garbage. You have your own smaller containers, and you have to follow the code for yard waste. Branches, they have to be cut certain length, they have to be bundled together, and leaves will have to be in bags, and so, but you cannot use those large cans or cars that we provided for yard waste.
Alderman Green?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner, just another point I want to make. I see that people are putting the garbage cans out backwards where the lift for the arm isn't there. Is that something you just want to make a comment on?
Yeah, just follow, I mean, thank you. There's very clear arrows, and they're pointing towards the curb. Just look at the top of the can in there. You see where the arrows are pointing? Just follow the instructions. It's very simple, but again, keep it away from your car, at least by a couple of feet. Keep it away from your mailbox, please, but minimum by one foot, please. That's important reminder. Otherwise, you'll make our job harder, and it's in the code where you have to put your garbage cans, and so on and so forth, so everybody will, everything will have to be adhered to, so we can have an efficient operation. Otherwise, we'll be taking days to pick up one location, and enforcement will follow, so please help us out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Fire chief? Let's burn these garbage cans.
You want me to burn them?
No.
I have nothing tonight unless there's any questions.
Any question for fire chief? Thank you, chief. City treasurer?
I have nothing tonight unless there's any questions.
Any question for Don? Thank you, Don. Please, chief.
Good evening. Just a few things this evening. Before you, there's a couple resolutions. The first one is the resolution for the insurance rider. There's no cost to that. It's a program that's already been approved by the council, and this is just an insurance rider. God forbid there's a breach of any type of information to protect us. The second one is the SRO contract. Just as a reminder, there's no cost to the city there. It's all reimbursed by the school district. It's been an amazing program thus far, and we hope to continue it. It's a great resource for the community as a whole. Additionally, I'd like to just recognize, I had three members of my department retire over the last couple of weeks. I've lost several this year with retirement, but specifically since the last time I was at a meeting, Sergeant David Frank, Lieutenant Aaron Welch, and Sergeant Ronald Magzaman, all retired after 20 years of service with the department, and I'd just like to publicly recognize them and wish them best in the next chapter of their lives. Additionally, I've spoken with many of you, or received emails or communications in regards to an uptick in some traffic concerns over the last several months. So recently, I've reassigned one of my officers to a dedicated traffic car, who's been going around addressing those traffic concerns, utilizing the data we receive from the electronic speed sign to do more targeted enforcement, and thus far, it's been very active, he's been very active, and hopefully it's going to be noticed by all of your constituents as well. Additionally, this last month, we've picked up our outreach programs again. Recently, this past week, we had a graduation of our first youth police academy, which was Friday, the 16th, and on Wednesday, the 14th, we had a graduation of our Too Good for Drugs program, which we ran in the evenings, due to the fact that some of the youth missed that opportunity with the remote school processing. And then this afternoon, we did our first jump-out barbecue in a year and a half at Davich Park. It was quite successful, and I'd just like to thank the fire department, the Parks and Rec, and the school district for all of their support and help in that program. And that's it, unless you have questions for me.
Any question for police chief? Thank you, chief. Corporation counsel?
I don't have anything more unless somebody has any questions.
Any question for corporation counsel? City clerk?
I have nothing this evening.
Any question for John? All right, let's move over. Marks of Alderman, Alderman Massey. I just want to congratulate and thank and welcome Ms. Kelly as our new treasurer, and Don, I want to thank you for agreeing to stay around and give some assistance. Alderman Green?
Thank you very much. I was going to echo that, you know, thank you, Don. It's been a pleasure to have you around, and thank you for offering to stick around for a little bit and teach Ms. Kelly the ropes, and welcome. I think, you know, it's going to be a great time for you, and we're very honored to have you here. Thank you. Also, I just want to point out something a little weird when you looked outside today and you saw, you know, that it was a little more hazy than usual on a hot day, and just kind of a reminder of the fact that, you know, the climate change and things are real, and there are things that are 2,000 miles away are starting to affect us here, so, you know, just that my thoughts on that are with everyone who are battling those wildfires and out west, so other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you, sir. I concur with my predecessors with respect to welcoming you to the organization. Thank you. I do have some thoughts on the cannabis law, but I'm going to leave that to when it's on the floor. Congratulations to DPW. It is a hallmark, and it has been a long slog to get here, and hopefully it'll be worth the wait. Anything we do with ONW, I'm happy to see that moving along. Anything with Willslayer, I'm happy to see that moving along.
No.
I think SROs are a great program. I kind of dabbled with that in my public education days, and I'm glad that the district and the city are willing to keep that program going. I think it's a great bridge between law enforcement and the community. And then I also noticed there's a guy named Dewan, who wants to re-up tonight, so I just want to say I'm on board with that. Thank you very much.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you, Jacob. We did see the truck at work yesterday, and it's, it works really well, so we're hoping for the best, but it looks like a good deal. And again, I thanked Don and Janet last time, and I want to repeat, I thank them for hanging in and not leaving us in the lurch as we transition, and welcome, Kelly, and wish you the best of luck. I'm sure you're going to work out fine. Thank you.
Alderman John Francois?
Yes, good evening. Again, Don Paris, you've been a great asset to the city. You're surely going to be missed. I kind of feel a little nervous with Kelly, because she's got a big shoes to fill, but I think you're going to do all right. It's good to see the county legislator. He hardly comes to see us every once in a while when he shows up. It's a pleasure to have him in our meeting. I mean, this man, to me, he's a good candidate for a superhero. I mean, he's a good friend of mine. This man, he's a firefighter. He's a businessman, county legislator, great husband, and father of two beautiful daughters. I mean, this one, he does it all, and not to count, he used to be a past alderman for eight, 10 years in the city of Middletown. Thank you for your service. It's a pleasure to see you here. Thank you.
Former finance chairman?
Yes, county legislator.
Alderman Burr?
It's great to see the ONW. It's been an eyesore in my ward for many years, so it's great to see that it's going to be done, something done with it. Don, it's great doing, you know, this is my third treasurer. You know, I've been here for three. Now it's four, so I wish Kelly the best. Don, you're a great teacher, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
New business?
Yeah. I have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to authorize the treasurer to transfer $200 within the Civil Service 2021 budget for the payment of envelopes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman John Francois. Any discussion? Rote?
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with CPI HR to provide services to the city with respect to the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Rote?
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Ann Kelly as treasurer of the city of Middletown to replace the term of Don Paris, term ending December 31, 2021.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a change order for the Richard P. Will Slayer athletic field.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to approve three projects using the ARPA funds.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to approve the easements for the water system improvements project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to approve the easements for the water system improvements project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to authorize the mayor to sign as sole signatory all necessary documents requiring pertaining to the consolidated funding application and for approval of the submission for the grant for the rehabilitation of the O&amp;W train station.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement between the city of Middletown and the enlarged city school district of Middletown for the purpose of carrying out the school resource officer program for the 2021-2022 school year.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to renew the contract for the chief of police DeWancho from January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2025.
Resolution by Alderman Green, do I have a second? Do I have a second? Unanimous. Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to declare the common council lead agency for the O&amp;W building rehabilitation at 7 Lo Avenue.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François to award the bid for annual plumbing maintenance work for city buildings and facilities.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to award the bid for the annual HVAC maintenance work for the city buildings and facilities.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to award the bid for the disposal of C and D and tires from cleanup, from the cleanup program.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to award the bid for the annual electric maintenance work.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to award the bid for disposal of aluminum metal appliances cast iron.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Motion for a floor.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the bids for chemicals opened by the Board of Estment on Thursday, July 1, 2021, and reviewed by the Commissioner of Public Works.
Motion by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Any discussion? Roll.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. That's all for new business.
Local law.
Tonight, we have a local law that will be voted on, sponsored by Alderman Massey, for opting out of the establishment of cannabis retail dispensary licenses and onsite consumption licenses within the city of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Alderman Massey, I'm Johnson.
I'm Johnson, he's Massey. Got you. I just wanted to share a few thoughts. I know we had a public hearing, a lot of things were discussed. Alderman Tobin discussed his point of view at two successive meetings and I told him I would take that under advisement. And I, to me, I see a lot of moving parts to this. I support the bill, I seconded it, I plan to opt out. I think in the public hearing, a lot of legalization comments were mixed up with what we're talking about. Are we going to smell marijuana in the state of New York for a while to come? We are. You know, next July 4, when your neighbor has a barbecue, you might smell burgers and you might smell marijuana at the same time because that's the way it's going to be. So it's already legal. I think dispensaries are self-explanatory, cafes are self-explanatory. I think the concerns we have about public consumption are also self-explanatory in a park, in a playground, outside a theater. Where's it going to happen? How's it going to happen? I think those are valid concerns. Will it make money? Absolutely. I read an article about Canada. They legalized it nationally in 2019. There were 37 million people in Canada and they sold $1.2 billion worth of cannabis products in 2019 and they expected 2020 to be 1.8. Will it generate income? Absolutely. Will it give law enforcement a headache? Absolutely. There are no criteria. What if I have a beer and a joint and go driving? Am I, am I under the influence of one, the other, both? Is it cumulative? Is it synergistic? We don't know. And then, you know, Mr. Tobin talked a lot about what I'm going to call reparations. You know, we have black and brown members of our society who were treated seemingly unfairly by the implementation of a law. So the solution to that is to take that person and facilitate that person's ability to be an entrepreneur in a cannabis store. To me, I find that to be condescending. If I've harmed you and I want to help you and you want to have a hardware store, why should I say, no, 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 you're a cannabis guy, you're going to have to have a cannabis store, otherwise we can't help you out? I don't see the logic in that at all. You know, 40 acres and a mule, now a cannabis store? I just don't, I just don't buy that logic. I understand it, but I don't buy it. And most importantly to me, the question of policy implementation. You may remember there was a, there was a law put in New York State not too long ago called bail reform. And the people I talked to, it kind of was a little bit of a rush, you know, to get that, to get that out there. And if you remember, within 30 days, there was a lot of backpedaling about how that wasn't going to work that well and we're going to have to change it. Well, what if we were given an option to opt out of bail reform for six months to see how it was going to work out? Would we have opted out or opted in? I don't know. I met a client the other day who works at Rikers. He's about to retire. He's been there 20 years. I said, well, what do you think of bail reform? He said, well, we went from 6,000 inmates to 3,000. And that's what bail reform did. It emptied out the prison. And where did those people go? They came back into our community. If we would have opted out to bail reform, that would have been really cool. And I don't have any confidence in this law being put out in July and all the details be figured out. And the state and the system have given us the gift of time. We can wait a few months, let the dust settle, and if it's a good thing, I really don't think we're going to lose that much out of income, that we're not going to have any stores in Middletown because they're all going to be in Walkill and all these other surrounding communities. Those are my thoughts. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. I plan on getting into bail reform. I know it gets blamed for so many things. All it did was let people out who couldn't get out before because they didn't have the money. Judges still have a lot of discretion to hold people with guns. They're not doing it. That's a whole separate. My, I've been back and forth on this because, you know, I have a lot of background in the way the law has been enforced and what the law has done and the damage it's done and the way it's been applied. You know, and you look back at prohibition and it was just so unsuccessful. Well, we want to be clear here, I'm not in favor of public consumption. I'm not in favor of public consumption of alcohol. I'm not in favor of public consumption of any drugs. But that's not the choice we're being given here. Unfortunately, this is going to allow public consumption and it doesn't always mean smoking. This is, this is smoking and edibles. So it's not always going to be about smoke. It's going to be about ingesting THC. I've had people talk to me who are very concerned about the black market for marijuana. It's been thriving and if you bring up, some people end up smoking oregano or thyme or god knows what else is in it. Some people might get marijuana laced with fentanyl that they buy in the black market. That's really dangerous. So my, my concern is that consumption is going to be legal. Are we going to give people a place that they can buy? You know, they're not getting wood alcohol or grain alcohol. You know, when you're buying alcohol, that you have liquor laws that protect you in terms of what's in the bottle, what's in the can, what you're drinking. And this, you'll have laws protecting you in terms of what's in what you're eating or smoking. And, and it adds a whole dimension of safety that we don't have now. Now granted, people can go outside of Middletown, I'm sure they'll be able to go to the town of Walkill and get a safe supply. So I, I hope this is really going to put a dent in the black market. We don't know, we saw out in California that they just had a multi-billion dollar bust of cannabis suppliers, so it'll, it'll be within the law. The other issue is, you know, with alcohol, we do have bars. People like to drink and socialize. And I've heard, well, people can go home and smoke or consume. Well, people can go home and drink too, but they like to go out and drink. And they like to have a bar to go socialize with their friends and have a drink. Well, people who use marijuana would like to have a place to go to socialize with their friends. And we, unfortunately, we really don't know what that's going to be like because, as the mayor has pointed out, we, we don't have the clarification on the law. What percentage are actually going to go to minority businesses and what percentage is built into the law? Where will they be allowed? I didn't really have a big problem with that. Anyplace you allow a bar, you could have a lounge where people could go in and smoke or consume marijuana, if there's a place next door where you can go in and consume alcohol. I, I don't see that distinction as strongly as some people do. So I've been back and forth on it. I was going to vote no, but what I think is that we, we don't have a full council tonight. I would like us to have a full council voting on it. So my, my, I think the best way to take a position against the public consumption is to support what the mayor is saying about his issues with that. So if we opt out, if the people are really, really committed, I would most like to see the referendum and let the voters of Middletown decide. That, that would be my preference. That is a long haul. You have 45 days after the law is adopted. Does that mean adopted? Does that mean signed by the mayor? Does that mean received by the Secretary of State? You know, that's going to be a little vague. I'm sure they'll get answers to that. But you'll have 45 days. People who voted, it'll be 10% of the people who voted in the last gubernatorial election. That's, that's who, that's the number of signatures you'll need. The people who can sign your petition are the people who were registered to vote in 2020, in the last general election. So you'll need 1,100 signatures. You know, if you can get that many and the people vote on it and the people say yes, then I, I'm, I'm thinking that I do want to let the people decide if they're that motivated. And otherwise, we'll opt out with the possibility of opting back in when they do clarify the laws and we have a better idea of exactly what will be allowed. And I've told people, if we opt back in, it's probably going to take six votes because I think it would be over the mayor's veto. But nonetheless, it's, it is there as a possibility to do it. So that's my thinking of it. I've been back and forth a lot on it for the reasons I've said. I'm concerned about the safety of people, giving people a safe place to go, letting people get off the street and have a place to consume it because it is legal, it's going to be legal, and we can't change that. I'd like to see the public consumption part changed, so I'll strongly support any effort to do that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll.
Kleiner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Jean-François.
Yes.
Burr.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Massey.
Yes.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Local law passes.
Mr. President, I move the accounts be ordered and claims be adjusted and the city treasurer be authorized to wish a warrants for their payment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green. Roll.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Mayor, do you have anything?
No. I was going to join the argument. Case is closed.
Thank you. Move for adjournment.